Good evening, Rolling Meadows. This is November 27th, 2018, 7:30 meeting of the City Council of the City of Rolling Meadows. Please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cannon.
Here.
Bud Metz.
Present.
Majikis.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Baner.
Here.
Diastis.
Present.
Williams.
Here.
With seven present and none absence, there is a quorum. Therefore, members of the audience are reminded that these proceedings are being videotaped for current and future broadcasts over the city's cable television channel. First of all, order of business is to approve the minutes from the November 13th, 2018 City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Mr. Cannon has made that. Is there a second? Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, question is, shall the minutes be approved? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been approved. This brings us to the mayor's report, and there are a couple of things that we need to... First off, we're all aware of the weather. I have been in contact with Mr. Crumstock throughout the last several days, and I have been... Several residents have reached out to me. I don't know if we have the latest update of how many... I know that we now have more crews working in Meadows. The last I heard is that they were expecting through early morning to have many of the houses done, but hopefully we'll have more of an update later. The other part is that I think going forward, I think that we need to... We've just finished with Station 15, and we're going forward with Station... Or the council will have the opportunity to go forward with 16. I do believe that we need to have... Take a closer look as this goes forward, and the council needs to make a decision when the bids do come back of where we're going with the second station. Our ward reports. Seeing none, the council is now open to members of the audience for 20 minutes to address the city. Council on matters that are on the agenda or regarding other issues. We ask that persons wishing to address the city council keep their comments to five minutes in length. Comments must be addressed to the council as a whole through the mayor, and profanity may not be used in any form. The first signatory is Peter... Okay, Tan... Tillis? Tan Tillis?
Close, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, well, you're being very kind to me. I know that last time I... Yes, go ahead.
I appreciate it. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and staff. My name is Peter Santillis, here on behalf of Venture One Real Estate for the project at 5540 Meadowbrook Drive. We're just asking for a quick revision to the resolution that was previously issued on November 13th, so I'm just here to answer any questions. I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. You did a splendid job there in the 20 seconds you were there. Our next signatory is Linda Ballantyne.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The Rolling Meadows Chamber of Commerce supports the Cook County 7B tax incentive request for Arthur J. Gallagher located at 2850 Gulf Road. Our organization feels there are over 700 valid reasons to support the 7B tax request by the city. That includes 700 new full permanent positions, new construction that will result in yet another state-of-the-art Class A office building showcasing and enhancing our expanded campus-like settings along the corridor, the Golden Corridor. Additional name recognition and attention for the City of Rolling Meadows as a premier location for corporate Fortune 1,000 companies and businesses and their support vendors. New and/or expanded community business-based partnership opportunities are also available through this. For that reason and many others with the 700 that we are counting, we ask for your support of the 7B tax request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ballantyne. Seeing no other signatories, this brings us to our first order of business, which is ordinances in for the second reading.
Resolutions.
I'm sorry. Resolutions in for the second reading. Resolution A, number 18-R-119, is to accept the fiscal year 29 library budget. This resolution, if adopted, would accept the fiscal year 2019 library budget. Is there a motion to adopt this resolution? Mr. Williams has made that. A second?
Second.
Mr. Diastis has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this resolution is adopted. This is... This now brings us to pending ordinances for the second reading. Ordinance C, number 18-50, to approve the property tax levy for Rolling Meadows Library. This is the second reading. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve levying property taxes for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2019, and ending December 31st, 2019, for the library. The Rolling Meadows Library Board of Trustees approved the fiscal year 2019 library budget at their October 2nd, 2018 Library Board meeting. The amount of the library's 2018 property tax levy for the library's fiscal year 2019 budget is $3,953,056, which is a 2.1 increase, or $81,307 from the library's 2017 tax levy. Pursuant to state law, the city is required to approve the city's annual tax levy ordinance. As a reminder, the library board approves the library budget. The city only approves the annual tax rate. Do I have a motion to move this ordinance forward? Mr. Diastis has made that. Mr. Baner has seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, that motion does fail. Going back to the original motion, is there any further discussion on... The motion is read previously. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
The seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. This brings us ordinance number 18-51, to approve property tax levy for the city for the second reading. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget from 4.7 to 2.7 and included one-time use of reserves. This two-stage, multi-year approach accumulates the amount for the proposed bond payment and lessens the amount of the total increase for next year's property tax level levy. Since it accumulates reserves, the partial amount for the future debt service payment would be levied in the Public Works line item for fiscal year 2019 and the reallocated for the estimated annual debt service payment in future years. For the fiscal year 2019 budget, the general reserve would be... Would reserve the estimated annual debt service amount in the general funds reserve. The property tax levy for 2020 would show the full amount of the annual tax service payment. The general fund estimated fund balance for a year fiscal year 2019 with the parameters of the fund balance policy at 28.5%, which is estimated at $9.3 million. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Mr. Baner has made that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Williams has seconded. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please...
I have discussion.
I'm sorry, sir. I apologize, Mr. Diastis.
With respect to this, when staff presented the proposal to reduce from 4.7 to 2.7, they also suggested that we could have a tax levy of 2.0% and use slightly more reserves. I'd like to make a motion that we reduce the 2.7 to 2.0 levy. The 2.0 will still allow the city to remain within the budgeted guidelines and the fund balances as we have previously set. So my motion is to reduce the 2.7 levy to 2.0.
Is there any further second to Mr. Diastis's motion? Is there further discussion on Mr. Diastis's motion? Mr. Baner?
Thank you. I was fine with the first reduction. It made sense. I don't want to reduce it any further. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on... Mr. Gallo.
I appreciated the effort that staff made in the reduction from four down to 2.7, but the whole goal is to accumulate a surplus in our fund balances, and I don't see it wise to continue to use what surplus we've established in order for single-time use. So I would not be voting to reduce it any further at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo. Any further discussion on Mr. Diastis's budget to... I'm sorry, Mr. Diastis's motion to move the levy from 2.7 to 2.0? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Metz.
No.
Majikis.
No.
Gallo.
No.
Baner.
No.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
No.
Cannon.
Yes.
With five in favor and two opposed, that motion does fail. Going back to the original motion, is there any further discussion on... The motion is read previously. Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
No.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Six in favor and one opposed, the ordinance moves forward to a second reading. Ordinance E, number 18-52, is to amend the city plan for fire logistics coordinator. This ordinance, if adopted, would amend the city's pay plan as per discussion from a recent closed session pertaining to personnel for the logistics coordinator pay classification at a C4 range for fiscal year 2018. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward? Ms. Majikis has made that motion, and there's a second for Mr. Baner. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo.
I'm sorry. What's the... Which... What are we on, taking...
E. Sorry. Motion E to amend the pay plan for fire logistics coordinator in the second. Yes.
Answer's no.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
With six in favor and one opposed, this ordinance is approved. Ordinance F, number 18-53, is to approve a liquor license application for a Class A2 liquor license for Daisy's Cafe in Rolling Meadows, Illinois, known as LLC at 3334 Kirchhoff Road. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve an application for a Class A2 liquor license. This liquor license application being requested by Daisy's Cafe. Rolling Meadows, this new restaurant cafe and video gaming establishment will be located at 3334 Kirchhoff Road. They are in the final process of completing the build-out. They hoping to open... Hope to open late in December or January. The definition of a Class A2 liquor license, Class A2 licenses shall authorize the retail sales on premises of alcoholic liquors for consumption on premises, but no such license shall be issued to any person, firm, corporation, or partnership unless a restaurant is opening at the same premises placed on that location for which the said alcoholic liquor license is applied. No alcohol liquor shall be sold by any Class A2 license holder for consumption off the premises. There should be no dancing on the premises of any Class A2 liquor license holder unless said premises are rented for a specific day by the holder of the Class C license as defined in this chapter. Is there a motion to move this forward? Mr. Diastis has made that. Ms. Majikis has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Seven forward and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. Ordinance G, is number 18-54, is to amend the city's personnel rules. Ordinance number 1803 and city code ordinance number 1807. To be consistent, the recently passed state legislation, this ordinance, if adopted, would amend city's personnel rules number 1803 and city code ordinance number 1807. To be consistent with the recently passed state legislation extending the timeframe for an employee to file a complaint for harassment or discrimination from 180 days to 300 days. Is there a motion to move this forward? Some movement, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Diastis has said yes, and Mr. Williams has seconded. Is there discussion?
My G is about approving a U-Haul sign. It has nothing to do with this, what you're discussing.
It was an amended one that was sent out after that.
This is the one they pulled up.
This is the one that we just pulled up.
This is the one I pulled up from the script.
They sent out a new one.
So... So which one did we download then?
The first one I sent out.
So...
Those two were left out of the first ones.
Okay. This is the one that was downloaded now.
There was a revised.
Yeah.
And the revised one changed.
136 was the date stamp.
Okay.
They sent out the leaked.
Okay, how many... There's a revised one that came out.
You can just go to the city's website and pull up the current one.
I know. You know what? Let's give council a moment because there seems to be some confusion so they get to the right. You can either go to the website or download the second one.
136.
In other words, there's a revised. So I am G. They don't have that. They have one that's different. Counsel, let me know when you're all on that ordinance.
I got it.
Are we good over on... Okay, good. Thank you.
Do we need to reread the ordinance, or are we good?
We're just... We're now in discussion, part of ordinance G. Is there any discussion or question on ordinance G? If not, will the clerk please call the roll?
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is approved. Ordinance H, number 18-55, amend the alcohol liquor code to approve a Class G1 liquor license for video gaming for Grande Jakes Rolling Meadows, Illinois, doing business as Grande Jakes Fresh Mexican Grill located at 5500 South New Wilkie Road. This is the ordinance, if adopted, would approve the city's second-class GI Gaming One liquor license for video gaming in the City of Rolling Meadows. The Illinois Gaming Board approved a video gaming license for Grande Jakes, which is located at 5500 South New Wilkie Road, Oganquin Road, at their Friday, November 2nd meeting. The definition of a G1 liquor license shall authorize the license holders of Class A1, A2, A3, or Class D in good standing to file a request for video gaming, terminal operator in video gaming in good standing, in a terminal business license application. If applying and receiving the Class G1, the business operator will not place signs, posters, pictures, or any wording on this... On these windows or the doors of the establishment mentioning video gaming, which exceeds 10% of the existing signage. They will also not place on the outside walls or roof of the establishment or shopping area any video gaming words or pictures. In addition, a partition shall be... A partition wall inside the establishment will be created for video gaming area consisting of four feet solid and permanent stable materials such as wood, paneling, or finished or painted drywall. Visual barrier for lower half and lattice or design blocks for the upper half. This establishment must have at least one grill, gas or electric, but each video gaming machine there must be a table, cabinet, or shelf, so drinks and food are not placed on the floor or on the machine. Is there a motion to move this ordinance forward? Some movement, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Diastis has made that motion. Is there a second? Mr. Cannon has seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Seven in favor and none opposed, that ordinance does... Is approved. This brings us in consent ordinances for the first reading. Ordinance number 1800... I'm sorry. 18, approve a sign appeal for an additional wall sign for the property located at 5201 Tollview Drive. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve a sign appeal to allow an additional wall sign facing south, the I-90 tollway at 5201 Tollview Drive at the U-Haul facility. This wall sign requested meets the size requirements of the M1 district, but this is an additional sign that is permitted by code. The petitioner has withdrawn its accompanying petition regarding the modification of the freestanding sign previously approved but never constructed. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Mr. Bud Metz has made that. Is there a second? Mr. Baner has made that. Is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
I find this particular really confusing in the packet as to what they're really going to build, and they're sending us pictures of a truck on a pole that they're not going to build. Would it be possible, prior to the second reading, to get a picture of what they really plan on doing so we can vote yes or no on it?
There. Mr. Crumstock?
I defer back to Public Works Director Fred Vogt, who was at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Okay, Mr. Vogt, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. The information is included in the packet for council's benefit because of the petitioner's initial request that was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission that was twofold, one for an additional wall sign that is still part of the request. The second element of their request was for the, what we called, a truck on a pole to replace the sign that had been approved two years ago that we called more of a conventional sign. At that meeting, during the discussion, the petitioner decided to withdraw that motion for the freestanding truck on a pole type of a sign, so they only wanted to go forward and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted only on the additional wall sign, so that's what's being on your agenda. We can certainly provide more information or clarify that at the second reading, but as is typical, we put all the information in that was at the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Vogt.
Or at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is the wall sign the U-Haul, all five letters spelled out, or is that a different freestanding sign? The freestanding sign that was approved in 2016 is the five letters. That's in your packet. So they're asking for neither of those and just a sign on the wall? The sign on the wall is all that's being asked for approval now because they did get approval two years ago for the five-letter freestanding sign. And are they still doing the five-letter freestanding sign? There are indications they've given us is they will consider pursuing that, but that was approved two years ago. Okay.
Mr. Vogt, any more clarification? Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Diastis.
I'm slightly confused. Are we on consent ordinances, or are we taking these individually?
Yeah. Your first reading consent ordinances.
So did some... So was this removed from the consent agenda?
No, we're...
I can actually clarify that.
We want to clarify.
There's two ordinances on the consent order, and obviously because one dealt with vehicle replacements, we decided that we wanted to... Well, dispose of surplus city vehicles and equipment. We wanted to make sure that if there were any additional questions, because in past practice, there've been questions on it, so we didn't want to have a consent and then people pulling it, so we made it a non-consent.
Okay, because the agenda reads consent ordinances.
Right. It was a decision after.
Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Cannon.
Yes.
Bud Metz.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Baner.
Yes.
Diastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance moves forward for second reading. This brings us to ordinance number 18, approve disposal of surplus city property vehicles and equipment, first reading. This ordinance, if adopted, would approve the disposal of items that have been determined to be surplus by the Public Works and IT Department. Once declared surplus, staff will work with an auction service to establish market values for all items proposed for disposal. All proceeds from the declared surplus will be returned to the appropriate fund by which the items were purchased. If approved, all items listed below will be listed through an auction service. And then the items are listed as a RM 225, 2007 Ford Ranger from the Community Development Department. from the Community Development Department with $2,000 projected value and 61,193 miles. An RM 304, 2011 Ford Crown, Victoria Police Department, with a $1,000 projected value of 108,000 miles, 108, and 113,000 miles. RM 201, which is a 2005 International Road Rescue Ambulance Fire Department, $5,000, with a mileage of 105,355 miles. A trackless model MT5, Public Works, $2,000, and an extended bed and miscellaneous computer items. Is there a motion to consider this ordinance for first reading? Mr. Bander has made that. Mr. Williams has seconded that. Is there a discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Bander.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
There are six, there are all in favor and there are no objections. We move on. The next item of business is the motion to approve the payment of bills on warrants, 112718. Is there a motion to approve this warrant? Mr. Bander has made that. Mr. Majikis has seconded it. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Bander.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda is the consent resolution. It consists of six items, L through Q. Does any alderman wish to remove any items from the resolution? Mr. Bander.
Q, please.
Any others? Seeing none, the chair declares an order for one motion to consider all five resolutions without debate. Is there such a motion? Mr. Bander has made that. Is there a second?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for. Question is, shall all five resolutions be adopted? Resolution L, number eighteen dash R dash 121, is to approve the release of closed session minutes and destruction of tapes. This resolution, if adopted, with the city council in closed session on November 13th, 2018, reviewed minutes or portions of minutes of closed sessions of the city council. At that meeting, the city council determined that a continued need exists for confidentiality of certain minutes. Resolution M, number eighteen dash R dash 122, is to award a contract for professional services for Phase One construction of the trench train replacement for Public Works North. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize a contract with Martin Construction for the construction services needed to remove and replace the western trench pipes, Phase One, in the vehicle service area for the combined service building, Public Works Facility, located at 3900 Burnick Road. The building at 3900 Burnick Road was constructed in 1997. The trench drain in the main garage was replaced in 2009 due to extensive failures. The trench trains in the fleet services areas have now incurred the same type of failures and are indeed being replaced. Staff is recommending replacing the drains in two phases. Phase one will include the drains located on the west side of the shop area, which is identified and approved in the fiscal year 2018 capital plan. Plans and specifications were developed by Clark Dietz, project engineer, and requests for proposals were secured. Four proposals for the project were received and reviewed by the engineer who is recommending awarding the contract to Martin Construction, located at 1200 Gasket Drive, Elgin, Illinois, 60120, in the amount of $47,580. Funding for this project is provided for in the fiscal year 2018 budget building and landing fund account, 33-70-3100-54610. The Rolling Meadows Park District will be advised for 34% of the project cost when completed. Resolution number eighteen dash R dash 123, amend 5540 Meadow Brook Industrial Court 6B incentive to include applicant's economic disclosure statement. This resolution, if adopted, would approve an amended resolution, which, if passed, will recommend to Cook County approval of the Cook County 6B classification incentive for property located in 5540 Meadow Brook Industrial Court. On November 13th, 2018, the Rolling Meadows City Council approved a resolution with recommended, the council approved of a Cook County 6B classification incentive for property located at 5540 Meadow Brook Industrial Court. This resolution, as provided by the applicant's attorney, failed to include a statement that the City of Rolling Meadows has received and filed the applicant's disclosure statement. To that end, the attorney for the applicant has provided an amended resolution and the economic disclosure statement. The committee of the whole reviewed this request at their October 16th, 2018, meeting and generally supported the request at that time. Also, the Economic Development Committee reviewed the request on October 2nd, 2018, and voted unanimously in support of the 6B incentive at 5540 Meadow Brook Drive. Resolution O, number eighteen dash R dash 124, is to award a contract for the streetlight to be relocated at 2765 Algonquin Road, Fuller's Car Wash Development. This resolution, if adopted, would reward a contract for a city-owned streetlight on Algonquin Road at 2765 Algonquin, to be relocated to accommodate the new driveway being constructed at the Fuller's Car Wash site. In an effort to assist the Fuller's Car Wash project, staff and the project engineer have determined that the streetlight in question is situated too close to the edge of the proposed new driveway. It is their preference of the staff that city administrator, the city administrator, the contract for its own streetlight relocation, as there are several underground utilities located in close proximity to the streetlight. Additionally, the existing streetlight was installed with an offset concrete foundation, which will have to be reinstalled in the same fashion due to the utility issues. The city obtained a proposal for this work to be formed by Mead Electric, a company that has performed street lighting maintenance services for the city for a number of years. The proposed cost is $11,564,000. Fuller's Car Wash has agreed to reimburse the city for the cost of this work, as the city is performing the work and the purchase order contract exceeds $10 million. Approval of the city council is approved. As the city is performing this work, the purchase order contract exceeds $10,000 and approval of the city council is required. Resolution number eighteen dash R dash 125, is to approve a fire union collective bargaining agreement. This resolution, if adopted, would authorize the execution of the collective bargaining agreement between City of Rolling Meadows and Rolling Meadows Professional Firefighters, International Association of Firefighters Local 3075, January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2021. Representatives from the Rolling Meadows Professional Firefighters International Association of Firefighters Local 3075 and the city management has been meeting and negotiating in good faith to develop satisfactory terms of a new collective bargaining agreement. As a result of these negotiating sessions and a few mediation sessions, terms of the tentative collective bargaining agreement have been negotiated and are being presented to the city council for its consideration. This agreement has been ratified by members of the Rolling Meadows Professional Firefighters International Association Local 3075. Again, the question is, shall all five resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Gallo.
Yes.
Bander.
Yes.
Deastis.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Seven in favor and none opposed. This resolution is approved. This brings us to Resolution Q, number eighteen dash R dash 126, is to authorize the support of a Cook County 7B classification tax incentive for property located at Arthur J. Gallagher &amp; Company in Rolling Meadows. This resolution, if adopted, would approve the recommendation to Cook County approval of a Cook County 7B classification incentive for property located within Arthur J. Gallagher &amp; Company Corporate Campus on Gulf Road. The committee of the whole reviewed this request at their November 20th, 2018, meeting and generally supported the 7B request at that time. Also, the Economic Development Committee reviewed the request on November 6th, 2018, and voted unanimously in support of the incentive. Arthur J. Gallagher is in the process of expanding its operations and is presently comparing real estate options in Houston, Texas, and Rolling Meadows. The possible new expansion of a building capacity in Rolling Meadows include a new building, which will house approximately 700 full-time permanent positions, new positions. Arthur J. Gallagher is seeking the City of Rolling Meadows' support of a Cook County Class 7B incentive, as well as some Illinois DCEO assistance to accomplish the Gulf Road facility addition. A Cook County 7B is usually intended to encourage commercial projects with total development costs, exclusive land over $2 million, which would not be economically feasible without this incentive. It's selected. The future expansion of the Rolling Meadows campus is estimated to have a value of 45.6 million, which includes approximately 36.5 million for building material and labor costs. A Cook County Class 7B incentive is similar to a Class 6B, which would result in a reduced assessment level of 10% of the fair market value for the first 10 years, 15% for the 11th year, and 20% for the 12th. Without this incentive, the commercial property would normally be assessed at 25% of market value. Do I have a motion to move this? So, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Deastis has made that motion. Do I have a second? Mr. Cannon? Mr. Bander?
Sir. Thank you. You probably remember I opposed the TIF five or six years ago. This 7B within the TIF, I find even more objectionable. I usually don't stand in the way of these 7Bs. It's just kind of an admission that Cook County is not very competitive and we need to throw out incentives to get people to stay or bring people in. And then the state weighs in too with edge credits, I think all of which are in play here. I understand where the chamber is coming from. That's what they do, support businesses when they're coming in and keeping jobs. But like I said, I just, I think this is even more objectionable than that TIF that was tens of millions of dollars, so I'll be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Deastis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sit on the Economic Development Committee and we vetted this out and we also vetted it out here. I think that Gallagher coming to our town, period, was great. And now they want to create a corporate campus here. They want to construct a new building, which is going to once again give more credibility to Rolling Meadows. They're bringing 700 new employees here. And we've heard it before, yeah, there are 700 employees, but they could be residents of Rolling Meadows. It could be people who will use and shop Rolling Meadows businesses. I am all in favor of this and I thank you for considering us and making us your campus headquarters.
Thank you. Further discussion? Mr. Budmats.
I'm assuming they're building a Class A office building that's going to bring, that's going to have a 40- or 50-year lifespan and they're looking for a discount on their taxes for the first 10 years of that? I'm all in favor of it. It would be foolish to say no and we want to encourage this kind of investment in our community, so I really welcome them doing this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bander.
No.
Deastis.
In my ward, thank you and yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Cannon.
Absolutely, yes.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
Majikis.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Bander.
That's okay, Rob would take a second vote on this one, I'm sure he would. With six in favor and none opposed, I mean, excuse me, one opposed, that does move forward. This brings us to council to businesses and reports. I have no appointments, proclamations. City clerk has no reports, I mean, no report. This brings us to staff reports, community items of interest. Mr. Crumstock, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. And I do have one addition when I get to the end. It's part of a press release that we put out after the storms that we recently had. But the first thing that I want to make sure that people know is when you're reading through the items of interest where we talk about yard waste collection ending on Friday, November 30th, obviously, as we put in the press release because of the storm damage, we do want to make sure that people know that any wind damage to trees and bushes, we will be collecting starting, obviously, Monday, December 3rd. You do need to have that at the curb for that collection. So again, damaged trees and limbs throughout the city will be picked up beginning Monday, December 3rd. That's right after the snow melts and everything else after the rain. But again, if you have any questions about damage, if you still have any additional, it does need to be up at the curb, please do not hesitate to call and contact Public Works at 847-963-0500.
One quick, just, my one question is, is it just a one-time offer or will, depending on how much comes forward?
It is a one-time offer, so you really need to have everything there to the curb by December 3rd. Public Works will continue picking up, but again, we're not asking people to keep on putting stuff. It's a one-time storm damage.
Thank you for the clarification. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
On Saturday, December 1st, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be conducting a food drive outside of the Jewel Esco Food, located at 3,000 Kurtoff Road from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We do have boxes already set up here in the council chambers on the first floor. If you're unable to make that Saturday event, we hope that people do fill, obviously, the Humvee. And I actually thank you very much to U-Haul that we just talked about earlier, because they are donating a box truck so we can actually, and they actually gave us some boxes, but they're kind of small for my things. But we also do want to remind people, the city will be conducting its annual tree lighting event on Thursday, December 6th, starting promptly at 6:00 p.m. Santa will be making his appearance at the tree outside of 3140 Kurtoff Road. That is just outside the McDonald's, which is under renovation. Fireworks will file the tree lighting this year. And then we do want to make sure that everybody joins the city for the spaghetti dinner. While supplies last, the spaghetti dinner does come from the stadium off of Algonquin Road. We do want to make sure that people do know it is at the fire station and that one does start at 6:30 p.m. So again, from the tree lighting, you can watch the fireworks and then go to the spaghetti dinner. We are trying to have the reindeers back. They would be back in the pen. Then we also want to make sure that people know that even with the snow, there's a lot of leaves out there, so please, please, do not push the leaves with your snow into the street or by any of the sewers. Obviously, we don't have street sweeper running anymore. We have, obviously, all of our plows, but we do want to make sure that with the upcoming rain that's supposed to come on Thursday and then obviously Saturday, that the sewers are actually open. Then we do want to make sure that the Rolling Meadows and the United States Marine Corps still have their collection for Toys for Tots going on. You may deliver new unwrapped toys here at City Hall 3600 Kurtoff Road and at the library, 3110 Martin Lane, until December 7th. And we do appreciate everybody who has given it now and will continue giving. We do want to mention that there is a community blood drive that will be held on Wednesday, December 19th, from 1:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. And right here in the council chambers on the second floor of City Hall, that's 3600 Kurtoff Road. Walk-ins are welcome. If you'd like to schedule your collection for blood, it's 877-253-4825. And then obviously, outside of here at City Hall, between the city swank and the Elgin Recycling, we are doing our holiday light recycling program, so the collection boxes that are outside here, they are located here only at City Hall. We do have two boxes. Obviously, the first box is full, but we wait for both boxes to be completed before we actually do dump. This item, actually, we're collecting all kinds of lights, Italian lights, C7 lights, C9 lights, rope lights, LED lights. And this collection goes all the way until February 15, 2019. Obviously, it's the last meeting of November, so typically what we do is we mention what's coming up in December for our other main committees. Economic Development Committee will be meeting on Tuesday, December 4th, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers. Tentative items of discussion deal with the new business feedback and October listing distribution. Continuing our outdoor seating discussion that we've been doing for the last few meetings before it does become a committee hall meeting discussion before the city council. Business advocate update, items of interest, the Chamber of Commerce update, and other items that we have. Also that night, Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on December 19th. Also that night, Planning and Zoning Commission will be meeting on December 4th. However, their 7:30 meeting will be meeting in the EOC. That's Room 250 in the City Hall Council Chambers on the second floor. They have three public hearings that are tentatively scheduled, and they kiss the of one, an amendment to a special use to allow a car dealer at the property located at 3975 Algonquin Road. That's our C2 General Commercial Service District, Nicholas Kim Luxury Auto Motive and Imports Incorporated is the petitioner for that. There will be preliminary and final approval of subdivision and consolidate two lots into one property located at 2320 and 2350 Hicks Road. That's our T1 Office Institutional and Research District, the T2 Transitional District. City of Rolling Meadows is the petitioner for that. That is actually where Fire Station 16 is being discussed. And then there is a sign appeal to allow an electronic message board sign with size variations on the property located at 2550 Quentin Road. That's in our R1 Single Family Resident District, and that is also by the City of Rolling Meadows for information bases on the west side of the city. I do want to mention this, two items, reminder for everybody here because of how Christmas lands for December, our meetings do go on the first, second, and third meetings on Tuesday in December. So December 4th will be a city council meeting, December 11th will be our committee of the whole meeting, and then December 18th will be a city council meeting. Going back to what I alluded earlier, from the press release that we put out, and we do appreciate the press picking it up too, and was actually in the Daily Herald and some other places, we have it on our signs, we also have it on our web. But recycling, due to all the storms that we had and the increase in snow, Flood Brothers wasn't able to provide service on Monday, November 26th. However, everything was backed up one day, so obviously for the remainder of this week, Tuesday, November 27th through Saturday, December 1st, they will be doing the recycling collection. And again, I do want to reiterate what I mentioned earlier about the storm damage for your trees and bushes, that collection would start on Monday, December 3rd.
Mr. Mayor, have a question?
Clarification, please. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. December 4th is economic development at 6:00 and planning and zoning at 7:30. Did you also say there's a council meeting that day?
There is. So that's why planning and zoning is in the EOC, and that's why we're in the council chambers.
Okay. So simultaneously?
Simultaneously, and you might not see Public Works Director Fred Voight, because he has to sit through the planning and zoning, but obviously, we've been doing this practice for a period of time that both meetings are going on at the same time.
And, Mr. Diastis, no one really liked the option of meeting here on Christmas, so we go forward. Mr., Ms. Gallagher, the financials, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, and members of the audience, and also who are watching. I am pleased to present the third quarter financials for the City of Rolling Meadows. And in the packet, it is a 21-page report, so I'm going to just really touch the highlights. The report does consist of an income statement and a detailed revenue analysis of the income statement for the general fund. We have some revenue fund, revenue, general revenue charts as well to go back several years. We also have the 2018 transfers for the budget. And then we also have the income statement for all the funds and the cash investment summary report. The city's financial position is strong for the general fund, all-in, through the third quarter, September 30th, 2018. Revenue's coming in at 28 million for the general fund, 87% of the year, year-to-date, which our target is 75%. Expenditures are coming in at 27 million, or 82% of budget. So we're a little bit better than budget and $1.5 million as far as the surplus, year-to-date. The city is meeting its fund balance targets for the general fund, 911 Fund, and also the refuse fund. The city is completing necessary capital improvements across the city for roadway improvements, water mains, sewer mains, all underground utilities and building projects. And then also, the city is diversifying its revenue stream, particularly with video gaming established this year, which will help with overall economic development activities and also increases to food and beverage taxes. In addition, the city has aligned itself with its neighbors with ambulance fees for the general fund, and then has also assisted us in achieving some of the revenue targets for this year. In the third quarter, the city did settle its labor negotiations with AFSCME and Local 150, which then we also know then are expenditures coming up. I wanted to turn to the all-funds income statement. Of course, there's a lot of detail within the packet itself, but I did want to highlight a couple items here. In particular, Gulf Road TIF, number four, the Gallagher TIF, wanted to highlight the nature to that TIF in the fact that we have revenues coming in through the property tax revenues, and our work in Squip Road was done this year. Also, just to point out too, while it's not in the packet, revenue for that, or the equalized assessed value for that TIF was about 13 million. And just as it is, just as it should be doing, equalized assessed valued, as we just took a look at recently, city manager Crumstock and I, it's about 43 million. So it's doing just as it should. I also wanted to point out, the utilities fund is on track for revenues, a little bit higher on the all-funds income statement, and capital expenses continue throughout the year. And also, one of our other major operating funds, the refuse fund, is on track with revenues and expenditures. On our summary sheet for cash and investments, our cash position as of September 30th is $25.3 million across all funds, of which 35% or so is sitting in the general fund, or 8.5 million. And just to wrap up, the third quarter financials also show that we have fiscal discipline, transparency, and commitment to the long-term practices of the city. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you.
Anyone have any questions from Ms. Gallagher? Seeing none, we go back to Mr. Crumstock for new businesses.
Thank you very much, Mayor and city council. Obviously, what you have before you is the October 2018 new business list. We did have three new businesses I would like to highlight, Pita Pita, which is 1219 Gulf Road. And again, we do have a few coupons here if you have not visited, but again, we hope them the best, and every time we've been there, they've been pretty busy. So again, three new businesses, we highlight them all, but again, Pita Pita, a new restaurant off of Gulf Road.
Traffic review, Mr. Voight? I guess you have four and five review, traffic review and street program update.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The traffic review committee monthly report, the meeting was held on November 7th, and I highlight for council from the committee, the discussion items. Number one was the trucks, large trucks that we get reports of occasionally parked on Meadowbrook and Tollview. Police Department reported to us that a number of citations were issued, and the occurrence of those problems have lessened. Second item discussed was Carriage Way. The refuse containers spent a practice for many years. On Tuesdays, when they get serviced, they put them out in the street. This is considered unsafe by the committee. It's a liability concern as well. Staff at Public Works will be making efforts, we've already had one contact with one of the complexes, to try to find alternative locations for their containers to be serviced that can be accessible, either in a paved area or on their own private property. So we'll work with them, and hopefully by spring, we'll have resolution to that and get those out of the street. Item three was a request that came from a relatively new business located on Keystone Court, having some on-street parking problems due to one of the neighboring businesses parking frequently vehicles on the street. The police chief requested to Public Works a temporary 90-day no-parking signage posting to evaluate the effectiveness of further restrictions. Those signs are scheduled to go up later this week, and we will evaluate that, and that will come back to committee. If we feel that it's a permanent fix solution, we will ultimately bring an ordinance forward to make it permanent to the city council. Fourth item is kind of a similar vein, but we've already witnessed a number of parking problems at the intersection of Meadowbrook and Lois. It's actually a 90-degree curve on that street. Part of the street already has parking restricted and signed, but we've had problems with some violations there. So police department's been asked to more actively enforce them. And because of the nature of the street curve, this committee is going to recommend the additional no-parking on the outside curve of the street to make it safer to navigate that street. Lastly, this was discussed last week at the committee of the whole regarding funding opportunities for grants for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. This traffic review committee supports looking at bike path extension projects, locations to be determined. So staff will be working on that in the upcoming weeks. So that's the report for the month of November.
Thank you. And for street program update?
Thank you again, Mayor. As we've discussed with some previous projects the last couple of years with regards to street programs and change order processes, we wanted to bring to council's attention that the 2018 street resurfacing program has been finalized out in terms of checking of all quantities and billings. We will be holding $10,000 on the contractor Schroeder Asphalt into spring to guarantee that all of the parkway restorations have been completed. The contract award amount was $776,676.44. The final contract amount earned was $776,192.45. So for less than $500 difference, that contract has been completed. There were no change orders required for that project to be completed. So that's our report.
Thank you, Mr. Voight. Are there matters not on the agenda? Ms. Majikas?
Thank you. I probably should have mentioned it during my report, but I'll mention it now. Ward three, I think, was hit the hardest with the electrical outages. So I know that there are still a good amount of homes still without power. As the mayor mentioned, Comett is working diligently on it. I myself was out for about 28 hours, so I can sympathize. But just to let people know, as the city manager had put out there, that we, the city hall is open for a warming station. So if you know somebody that obviously can't see this or hear this, or you're concerned about, or they don't want to leave their, go far from their home or anything, please pass on or check on them. That city hall is open and available as a warming station, along with the library and the community center. But obviously, those are closed, well, the library closes at nine, so. So I just want that to be put out there, that the residents are aware, they do have somewhere to go. And then I also, as I usually tell them, I, Public Works, wonderful job on the streets for the first storm, and a nasty one, and hit hard. You guys just rock it with those streets. You go from Meadows to Arlington, and what a difference. So please pass on to all of Public Works and the Streets Division that they did a wonderful job, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Will do.
Thank you. Any other matters not on the agenda? Mr. Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In light of the nasty storm that we all just experienced, and with all electricity issues, snow issues, and trees down, I would just ask the staff at Public Works if they can make sure they get someone to answer the phone. I know I've had some problems myself in the last couple of weeks getting a direct, someone actually pick up the phone when you call in. I had one lady today who claimed she called three times, and no one directly answered the phone. I know it's a heavy volume thing, I understand that completely, but I think it's much more helpful when they can get a call back or have someone answer the phone live. So if they could make sure they're staffed up for that, that would be helpful, I think. Because I think we're probably going to keep on getting a lot of calls in the next couple of days, if I was betting right.
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. Other, Mr. Budmanz, sir?
Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at last week's cowl meeting, but like everybody else, I had the opportunity to watch on Channel 6, and I did. And so when the subject of the fire contingency, the fire station contingencies came up, I watched with great interest, and I was really disappointed to hear that Station 15 is already behind schedule. The contract has a completion date of July 19th, and that contract was agreed to on September the 11th, 11 weeks ago. And according to the construction schedule, it's already five weeks behind on an 11-week-old contract. So it's really disappointing. We're told, or you guys were told, I wasn't there for that, that the weather is the cause of the delay. However, in May, at the cowl meeting, Mr. Board told us he was going to push to get the foundations in, and he understands that he would need to get the masonry done by December the 1st. I visited last week before the snowstorm, and as of then, there was no concrete poured for the floors, there was no masonry done, and the footings were not, or the foundations were not complete as of yet. I'm a manager of people for my job. Our fire chief, Terry Valentino, also manages people. However, if I were pressed into service to manage the fire department and his people, I would really feel ill-equipped to do so. Chief works in a fire station, however, that does not qualify him to manage the construction project to build a fire station. Each of us would do the best job we could if we were directed by our boss to branch out and expand our job description for a time period, and I believe that his efforts have gone far above and beyond what should be expected of a fire chief in this situation. Therefore, I suggest the council, it's high time for us to provide some direction and insist that the city hire a construction manager qualified for this work, to run and observe this project, and serve as its owner's representative, as is allowed for in Article 4.7 of the contract. We are over the original budget, we're behind the schedule, and we're staring the unknown costs in continued construction of a second fire station, which we know is coming down the pipe. I suggest before we spend any more money, that we invest in the future of the fire station by hiring a qualified project manager who has the city's best interest at heart. I respectfully request the council pass a resolution instructing the city to hire a qualified project manager for this project, and let Chief Valentino go back to being a fire chief.
Thank you, Mr. Budmanz, and I agree wholeheartedly with your suggestion. Other discussion? I mean, other matters not on the agenda? There is a request to go into closed session for union negotiations under Illinois 5ILCS 120 over two of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, and there is a, to go into closed session for personnel under Illinois 5ILCS 122, the Illinois Open Eating Act, Meetings Act. Is there an, do I have a motion to move forward? Mr. Baner's made that. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk call the roll?
Diastis?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Cannon?
Yes.
Budmanz?
Yes.
Majikas?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Baner?
Yes.
Seven in favor, none opposed. We will all enter into closed session. The audience and the press are advised that we do not anticipate taking any action upon returning to open session.